Testing, ooh, there we are. Too bad, sorry. All right, good evening, everyone. Let's get the meeting going. First item would be to call to order with roll call. Can we let the record reflect that all five commissioners are present? Anne, I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance, if you'd like to join me.
The pledge is to the public and the United States of America and to the republic, which is one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item tonight is oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Each member of the public that submits a speaker slip will receive three minutes. Are there any speaker slips?
We have no speakers.
Okay, seeing no speaker slips, we'll move on. Item five, changes to the agenda. I'd like to propose a change to the agenda to take care of the secretary reports and commission reports now, as I'll be recusing myself later, and I won't be here at the end of the meeting.
Support that.
Okay. I don't know if it needs a motion, I just do it. Okay, so with that, we're going to skip ahead briefly to item nine, future agenda items added by planning commissioners. Are there any?
None.
I did want to bring up the fact that the affordable housing subcommittee still hasn't had a chance to meet with the city council, and I was curious if we had any further indications on an agenda.
Not at this time, but it's something that staff is still looking into.
Thank you. Item 10, planning commission reports. Any reports to be given? Seeing none. Any secretary reports? So with that, we will jump back to our regular items. Item six is the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar considered routine in nature or uncontroversial. Tonight, there are two items, approval of the meeting minutes from August 21st and the Union Street Heritage Grove.
Yes, and I'd like to pull item 6B from the consent calendar.
Okay, pull that. I'd like to call the vote on the remaining item on the consent calendar.
And make a motion to approve the remaining item, item 6A.
Second that.
Okay, call the vote. Okay, the consent calendar passes 5-0. So now we'll move into item 6B, which was pulled from the consent calendar. And do you want a staff report? Do you want a...
I would like a staff report, please.
Okay. Can we get a staff report, please?
Hello and good evening. Let me set up the presentation. There you go. My name is Charlotte Brenner, and I am presenting the item before you for the request to nominate seven ficus trees located on private property for heritage grove status. The request before you is seven ficus trees located on private property at 670 Union Street. The trees are located near the southern property line along Union Street, and the trees are identified above. To be designated as a heritage grove, the trees must collectively meet one or more of the heritage tree criteria. To be nominated as a heritage tree, it must be considered a tree of community significance that meets one of the following criteria. It is one of the oldest and largest of its species, it has a unique form or species, it has historic significance, or it's a defining landmark, or significant outstanding feature of a neighborhood. Trees located on private property can be designated, but they require the approval of private property owner, of the private property owner. The owner has nominated this tree and provided approval. The seven ficus trees have been recommended for approval by the UFAC, Urban Forestry Advisory Committee. The trees were found to be a defining or significant outstanding feature of the neighborhood due to the visual impact of the trees on Union Street from the east and the west. The trees stand from 40 feet to 47 feet in height. I've provided some photos. This is the view from Union Street of the trees identified as 1 through 5. These are the trees from Union Street identified as 2 through 7. We have the view from Union looking west and the view from Union looking east. And here's a photo from the private property. The project has been determined to be exempt from SEQA pursuant to section 15061b3. The determination of the status of a heritage grove is not an environmental impact. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the nomination of the seven ficus trees as a heritage grove based upon the findings contained in the attached draft resolution of approval. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. You have questions?
I do, I have a couple of questions. So I have some questions regarding the roots of the trees and what kind of work was done to determine the diameter of the root base of the trees, specifically how far they go into city property right of way on the street.
So our city arborist will go out and do an inspection on the trees. I don't have the information on the root width. However, the trees were inspected by the city arborist. And can you repeat the second part of the question?
Yeah, so, well, they're kind of part and parcel because I wanted to know, I mean, they're large trees and they're ficus. I was wondering how, how far are they, the trees themselves, the trunk of the tree, from the part where the, it's public right of way? What's that distance? Do you know?
I do not have the distance, but we did have public work staff go out to the site and measure to ensure that it was out of the right of way and entirely on private property. So all of the trees are entirely on private property.
Okay, when you say that, you're talking about the trunk of the tree itself, not the canopy of the tree, and also not the roots. Is that correct?
Correct, it would be the trunk.
It's my understanding that for ficus, that the roots can be, can go a significant distance from the trunk of the tree.
I believe there was discussion of the roots in the UFAC meeting within the minutes, but I don't know what the width of the roots were.
Okay, I did read, I did read them. I didn't see that specific question asked or that discussion had in that meeting, so I was hoping for a little more clarification on that. So do you know how far, how big a root, the roots can go out for a typical ficus tree of that size from the trunk of the tree?
I do not.
Can you tell me what the process would be if the roots of the tree are damaging the public right of way? And who would be responsible? And how that would impact the designation if the trees were designated? And I'm sorry, that's another multi-question question.
So the maintenance and removal of city trees and heritage trees are described in our administrative manual. So any maintenance to a tree that's designated as heritage tree will need to comply with our administrative manual that has the specific pruning and root maintenance. Any permit that's issued would be reviewed by our city arborist.
Okay, so what if root maintenance would require the digging up of the public street in order to do root maintenance? And who bears the cost of that, the city or the property owner?
No, I think that would be something that we would need to ask the public works department, the engineering department, to see how they would work that out. But if I can venture out a little bit and kind of understand what you're asking, is if they become a problem, what happens? And so the planning commission is able to rescind the heritage tree designation, so that's one. So if it becomes a problem, that can be revoked. It would come to a hearing like we're doing now, to be able to hear the facts of the case. And if there's damage that's caused by a property item that's on private property and then causing damage to something adjacent, I believe it would be the property owner. But I, again, that's kind of a civil, like legal matter, and that's probably something that we would get into more when it's happening, and define that better when it's happening.
It's also the same process if the property is sold to somebody else. It's my understanding that they take on the responsibility of maintaining the trees as heritage trees, and if they want to have the designation removed, for let's say they want to do some, they want to put some kind of other, some other kind of building on the property that would require the removal of the trees, that they'd also have to come to the planning commission for a vote?
If they would like to remove the designation of heritage tree, it would come back to planning commission for a vote. However, if there's, in Encinitas Municipal Code, Chapter 15, it discusses if there is a need to remove a heritage tree due to emergency cases, the city manager, it says a heritage tree can be removed as determined by the city manager. So there, there is something in place if there is an emergency where we need to remove a heritage tree.
Okay. Is this type of ficus tree, a tree that's been identified as a mature tree? You know, you know how in, I don't, I don't know if it's actually been adopted yet, our mature tree, it hasn't been adopted yet, has it?
It has not. It has not been adopted yet. So we just took the mature tree ordinance to the Urban Forest Advisory Committee recently, and they provided some recommendations on that. And so the next step is to take it to the environmental commission, and then we'll bring it back to the planning commission.
Okay. Do you know if this type of ficus is a tree that's been proposed as covered in the mature tree ordinance?
Off the top of my head, and I would need to verify this, I don't remember seeing that listed in the ordinance explicitly, but I would have to do fact checking on that.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, we'll come back to you, Chris.
Okay, that's fine.
Oh, go ahead, no, finish up. All right, real quick. By designating it as a heritage tree, does it change the civil impact between the neighbor or any adjacent to Chris's point, the city, in terms of how to deal with the canopy that extends over the city or the roots that might protrude into the city right of way or into the neighbor's yard? Is a heritage tree treated any differently in a civil matter if the roots penetrate adjacent property?
That's a legal question that I don't think I'm able to answer.
All right, back to you, Scott.
I am hurriedly reacquainting myself with our ordinance. So you can come back to me.
We'll come back to you on that one. All right. Is, it's my understanding, and I'd like you to confirm, if the, this species of ficus is on the city's no-plant list?
So a ficus tree is, and it is on the list of invasive species. However, invasive species does not mean it has to be removed or not designated as a heritage tree. It's really more of a do-not-plant guide, so we wouldn't encourage planting ficus trees.
So if a development came or a proposal came with a landscape plan and someone had a ficus tree on it, on the plan, the city would say to that applicant, "We'd rather have you not plant that tree." Is that fair to say?
If they were proposing a new ficus tree, correct?
Right. Yes, so my two questions were that and if it, the designation somehow affects the civil requirements of the neighbors and complaining.
So I haven't seen, I've looked through the code, I didn't see anything in here that changes duties with respect to neighboring properties. The main impact of this is essentially saying, if it's a heritage tree, then there, it's more difficult to remove it later. For example, you might need to come to the planning commission, you might need to receive approval of the city arborist. Those are the two main requirements.
Okay. Is there a benefit to the owner for having a heritage tree? A tax credit or any sort of reason to do this?
I don't know of a property interest or a reason other than we want to make sure that these trees continue to be protected even after I'm no longer the property owner.
Right, okay. Chris, do you have a follow-up?
No, not from staff.
Okay, thank you for the information. Is the applicant here? Would you like to address the commission?
And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We moved to the property in 2015, and at that point, the entire property was surrounded by ficus trees. And that's one of the main reasons why we wanted to move to that property. If it's the defining landmark is folks turn into the street, it's how directions are given to folks coming in. And sometime during our escrow in 2015, some of the, on the west side of the property, the ficus trees were removed. And it was, it was heart-wrenching at that point because that was a distinguishing feature of the property that was very important to us. And so earlier this year, I learned about the heritage tree designation in Encinitas and applied for that because I want the trees to be protected. And quite frankly, my neighbors liked the trees and could inform me they wanted them to be protected as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Yes, Susan?
I understand that trees are entirely rooted on your property?
Mm-hmm, yes. Well, as far as I know, I'm not an expert on ficus trees and what happens underground, but as far as I know...
Where they enter the ground, it's your property?
Yes, that's true, yes. And to answer the question before, I believe they're about between 10 and 15 feet in from the street.
I'm going, has the city coming, I was over there this afternoon, I guess I needed to disclose that, I went to it. So the canopy extends over the road.
Yes.
Probably about halfway. Has there been any trimming? Has the city ever come to you and say, "Hey, you're over the top, it's a fire hazard, it's a truck hazard, it's UPS bumped into it"?
Sorry. The city has never come to us, but we've maintained it on our own and maintained a canopy over it with the understanding that, I think there's some nurseries, or there used to be nurseries at the end of the street, and they had trucks, and we didn't want them to obstruct the traffic in any way. So we've, we've maintained the trees in that manner.
And to staff, if there was ever some issues with the canopy extending over the road, then they communicate, is the process, they communicate with the property owner that the city's going to come out and do some work because it might be obstructing the public right of way? Is that how that works?
Yeah, should there be any form of a code violation and a member of the public submits a request, basically that they're a code complaint? Then the city would send out our code compliance officers to investigate the claim and determine if there is a code violation, and in that, we would follow the standard code compliance procedures to rectify the situation.
So the designation doesn't really affect that normal process?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. With that, I'll close the public comment portion of this item and open it up to Commissioner deliberation.
I have to say that although it's on the no-plant list of the city, mature trees enhance our canopy, carbon sequestration, and as a longtime advocate of California natives, it's definitely not one of those. However, it's a mature tree, it's been there quite a long time. And as far as the canopy going over the road, I'm okay with that. I've heard the owner, he said he's maintaining and would do more if needed. And so I think if this is on his property, all seven, and the roots enter the ground, set back quite a distance from the right of way, it's a good idea overall. Personally, I think ficus are invasive and a plumber's friend. But in this case, I would be inclined to support his application.
Okay.
I can go. So I think you probably told by my questions, I had some, a few concerns about the designation, and it really has to do with too many unanswered, part of it has to do with too many unanswered questions at this point, not knowing truly what the responsibility is if the trees start to tear up the road, and whose responsibility that would be in order to do the repairs. And just from my personal experience on my street, we have this exact same issue where people have mature trees, I don't think they're ficus, but they have mature trees that have almost completely destroyed my street, and we can't, even though people file complaints, nothing has been done. And you have to do like this little jig to go around the roots that are, that are coming up through the pavement. So I feel like there's unanswered questions regarding whose financial responsibility it would be, whose legal responsibility it would be. I was kind of hoping the arborist would be here so we could talk more about the roots, but ficus are historically known to have, like as Susan said, to be a plumber's friend because of the invasive nature of the roots of this type of tree. They are on the do-not-plant list for the city of Encinitas. I'm not saying in any way that they're not beautiful trees. My neighbor has ficus that I enjoy the back of, but luckily, they are probably like 30 feet, 40 feet from my house. And they are, they are very tall, and they actually do block my sun, the taller they get from getting to my house. But, so that's also another question, as these trees continue to grow, whose responsibility is it in order to do things like save, to protect people's, other neighbors', the ability for them, their property, their solar, to have the sun that they need? So I feel like at this point, there's too many unanswered questions about the legal responsibilities, the financial responsibilities for the trees. I have some concerns about putting this burden on a future owner, future owners of this property, because it's easy to say that they can come to planning and get it changed, but that doesn't mean that they will get it changed if they come to planning, because who knows what the planning commission at that time will decide about these trees. So any decision we make today impacts any future owners of the property as well. So those are my main concerns with designating these trees as heritage trees.
Okay, thank you. Brent?
I guess I really felt like this was, you know, well within the property owner's rights to try to designate a tree as a heritage tree. It is, they are mature trees, they're very well protected already within the community. It was interesting to me that of the requirements for meeting a heritage tree, they only met one of them, and I didn't actually find that one all that strong. It's visual if you're on Union, I think. Other than that, I'm not so sure, you know, how visual they are. However, I do feel like the, as far as the legal ramifications for, for designating a heritage tree, I think there's enough recourse to get anything corrected that would need to be in the future with any changes along that particular area. So I, I suppose I've fallen more in favor of it. I don't, I'm, I definitely, with a good, strong argument, I could be swayed.
Thank you. Bob?
I agree 100% with Susan, however, the last, I guess maybe the last 2%, maybe 98% with Commissioner Serad. I think at the end of the day, my concern is, I've had experience with ficus, they are a plumber's best friend, I think that was an important point. I think Commissioner Serad pointed out that the mature trees and the canopy is very important to the city and to every, and not just the city, but to everybody. However, I, my 2% is, we're giving a specific designation to a plant that the city really doesn't want to have in our city, and providing a heritage is inconsistent, I think, with our objectives. I do know that I voted last time to approve a heritage tree for a large eucalyptus tree, and I think in hindsight and upon greater reflection, I might revisit that vote, because once again, I don't know if eucalyptus are on the no-plant list, but it's a non-native species, and there are probably other trees that you could plant, native sycamores and others that grow rapidly that could provide the same services. I guess the legal component of fixing the roads and those all stay compliant, so the heritage designation doesn't really affect the ability of the city to deal with the tree if there's any issues nor the neighbor, which I'd be concerned about. But I come down to the inconsistency of the tree as a plant that our city wants to have in its community and wrestle with the mature nature of the canopy and the carbon sequestration that Commissioner Serad mentioned. So I kind of lean towards a no on this one. Okay?
I, I also have several of the same concerns. I did not find that to be a particularly attractive grove of trees. It looks a lot like a hedge, it's big. I'd be really, find it a little absurd that we would be protecting a ficus tree that was on our invasive species list, and we do not want anybody to plant these things. So I, I'm not really very, I'm probably in favor of not deeming this a heritage grove. I find it very, it met one of the four criteria, and even that, I think, is debatable. It's visible, absolutely. It's big, but does it define the character of the neighborhood, you know, beyond just that property? I'm not sure that it does in my mind. I'm also hesitant about the city's administrative burden of... I'm also hesitant about the city's administrative burden of tracking heritage trees and the time to, in the future, adjust something about these trees. This property owner can continue to maintain the trees, and if they like them, great, keep them in place, and they're there. But I'm not sure why we, as a city, would step in to try to protect these trees. So I tend to fall, I guess, into the no category on this.
I'm kind of curious, since they're 100% on the private property, what protection does it give to declare it a heritage grove?
I don't think it does anything that the owner can't do himself, I mean, the owner can continue to maintain and keep those trees. I think it's-
Maybe it's so that if the property changes hands, they maybe have it as a selling point or descriptor?
Yeah, but I'm not sure why the city should be involved in that transaction or that determination for a private property that has marginal, you know, some old trees, but not historic.
The owner mentioned that some trees were removed, and that it was pretty heartbreaking. Maybe they feel worried. I'm not sure if we can, can we ask?
Well, it's private property, who could remove the trees other than the property owner? Right? There's nothing that we, no action that we take tonight that will prevent a vandal, you know, like that's just a criminal act, right? Nothing's going to require the owner to go take them away.
It becomes a criminal act, though, if someone vandalizes the tree either way?
Yeah, they trespass onto his property.
I was like, make a motion to deny the applicant's application for heritage grove status.
I'll second.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry. So what we can do is, we'll return at a future meeting, so we'll consider, assuming that the vote goes as I expect it will, then we'll bring back a resolution at a future meeting. The public hearing will be closed, the sole question at a future meeting will presumably be on consent calendar to indicate this is the resolution that describes the findings of why this is being denied.
Okay. Brent, did you have a quick discussion on this?
They'll have to rewrite the resolution to reflect a denial instead of approval.
So I guess, so we'll rephrase the motion, if I may, so the motion will be to direct staff to return at the subsequent, at a subsequent meeting with a resolution denying the application.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, with that, I'll call the vote.
Just to clarify how we vote here, so we're voting, a yes is means we're voting to support the motion that's been made.
So I guess let's do this officially.
Okay.
The motion that I would recommend, and then I'm asking for a first and a second, the motion would be to direct staff to return with a resolution in the future to deny the application. So a yes means we're killing the project, that we don't want the treaty designation.
And Bob, does your motion still stand as amended?
As amended by our esteemed counsel.
Second?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that motion passes 3-2. Okay, that moves us on to the regular agenda item, items. There's only one item tonight, 8A, and before we get into this item, I'd like to read a quick statement that's been prepared for me. "I will be recusing myself from consideration of this item. As you may know, I have a business entity interest in Stephen Dalton Architects. The business is an architectural firm, and I am the sole owner of the firm. I also have a source of income from this firm in that they pay me a salary. One of my clients has hired Warmers Properties to manage one of their projects in a different jurisdiction. And in this capacity, Warmers will be managing both myself and other consultants in this project." In other words, in a manner of speaking, I report to Warmers on this particular project. Warmers Properties also engages the owner's rep on Sage Canyon project that's before us tonight. "As a result, there is no, there is the potential that these two economic interests I just mentioned may be impacted by my involvement with the Sage Canyon application. Although it is not certain that I have a legally prohibited conflict of interest, to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I will be recusing myself from consideration of this item. Given that this is the sole remaining item on tonight's agenda, I'll be leaving for the rest of the evening, and wish you well." And with that, I will hand it over to Vice Chair Ryan.
Thank you. So yes, now we're moving on to regular agenda item 8A, project name Cage Canyon Apartments, case number multi-007196-2024, and I would like to start first with a staff presentation.
Good evening, commissioners, members of the public. My name is Christina Bustamante, and I will be presenting this project to you this evening. Sorry, bit of technical difficulty here. Let's try that again. There we go, okay. "The project is located on the south side of Sage Canyon Drive. The site is sloping downward toward the west. The topography ranges from an elevation of 223 feet above mean sea level in the southeastern portion of the site to approximately 86.5 feet above the mean sea level on the western portion of the site. The property is currently accessed from Sage Canyon Drive. The project site is within the housing element residential R30 overlay zone. The surrounding property to the northwest and south are within the residential 3 zone, and properties to the east are within residential 2 zone. Discretionary permits for this project include a design review permit, a density bonus request, a coastal development permit for 120-unit multifamily apartment development on 5.23 acre vacant site. The project renderings are providing perspectives from the north, south, east, and west. The project is subject to the Encinitas Municipal Code for Development Standards, Hillside Inland Bluff Overlay, and City Objective Design Standards and Guidelines. The project is also subject to state density bonus law and government code. The applicant is proposing to provide 24 low-income units, which exceeds the required minimum of 10% established under the state density bonus law. Housing development consisting of five or more dwelling units may propose density bonus in accordance with state density bonus law. Projects that qualify for the California State Density Bonus Law are also permitted waivers and concessions. A concession pursuant to state density bonus law is defined as a reduction in site development standards or a modification of zoning code or architectural design requirements, such as reduction in setback or minimum square footage requirements, approval of mixed-use zoning or other regulatory incentives or concessions which actually result in identifiable and actual development cost reductions. Under state density bonus law, a waiver is an exception or modification to a local development standard, such as a setback requirement, height limit, or parking ratio that would otherwise physically prevent a housing project from being constructed at the density allowed by the state density bonus law. The applicant is potentially allowed up to two incentives or concessions, those terms are being used interchangeably, and an unlimited number of waivers. The applicant is requesting a waiver for Design Standards 5.9.2, which states that when a retaining wall exceeds six feet in height, a maximum of three free standing or retaining walls within 20 horizontal feet are permitted if a four-foot minimum landscape setback is provided between each proposed wall with a maximum height of six feet for each wall. The waiver would allow retaining walls up to approximately 34 feet in height. Retaining walls have been split between the east and west sides of the project. Importantly, the taller retaining walls will be screened by the proposed building. The applicant is requesting a waiver from Encinitas Municipal Code, Section 30.34.030.B.2, which limits encroachment into natural steep slopes by 10%, limiting development in steep slope areas. Over 30% of the project site is covered by slopes greater than 25%. The code limits the project to encroaching into steep slopes to 10%. The waiver would allow the project to encroach approximately 28% into the steep slope area. The applicant is requesting a waiver for Encinitas Municipal Code, Section 3016.010.B.6.8, which states that building height is limited to 35 feet in the R30 overlay zone. The waiver would allow a building height on the west elevation of 75 feet 2 inches to the tallest point of the access stairs and 73 feet 2 inches to the tallest point of the residential building. The applicant is requesting a waiver for Encinitas Municipal Code, Section 3016.010.E11, Private Storage Space, a minimum of 200 cubic feet of lockable enclosed storage area per unit shall be provided within a garage or carport area or within a main building. The waiver would allow the project to provide 70 storage units with approximately 225 cubic space, which is more than the required 200 cubic feet, but less than one storage space for each unit. Per Encinitas Municipal Code, 3016.10E12A, Private Open Space, a minimum of 100 square feet per unit shall be provided as private open space for both ground floor units and units contained wholly on the second floor and third floors. For units wholly on the second and third floors, this open space may be provided by outdoor decks. The waiver would allow 7,039 square feet of private open space, which is approximately 60 square feet of private open space per unit. The applicant is requesting a waiver from Encinitas Municipal Codes, 3016.10E12B, which requires 200 square feet of common open space per unit. The waiver would allow approximately 5,200 square feet of outdoor common open space and approximately 4,100 square feet of indoor common amenity space. A concession or incentive pursuant to state density bonus law is defined as a reduction in site development standards or a modification of zoning code or architectural design requirements, such as reduction in setback or minimum square footage requirements, approval of mixed-use zoning or other regulatory incentives or concessions which actually result in identifiable and actual development cost reductions. The city is required to grant the concession or incentive proposed by the developer unless it finds that the proposed concession or incentive does not result in identifiable and actual cost reductions, would cause a specific adverse impact on the public health or safety, would harm property listed on the California Historical Register, or would be contrary to state or federal law. Typically, new developments require right-of-way improvements pursuant to Encinitas Municipal Code, Chapter 23.36. The project has requested a concession to allow for the proposed project to be granted discretionary permits without public improvements along the project frontage on Al Camino Real. The city received a letter dated October 9, 2024, demonstrated that the applicant acknowledged the city's concerns with approving the concession request that would allow omitting the public improvements along Al Camino Real. As described in detail in the September 4, 2025 memorandum from the city engineer, omitting the installation of the required public improvements would cause a significant adverse public health and safety impact that cannot be mitigated. The concession would result in an adverse public health and safety impact to pedestrian safety and access, bicycle safety, traffic safety, and evacuation time in the event of an emergency. The absence of sidewalk along the proposed project frontage, a prime arterial where 120 residential units would be constructed along the highest-speed roadway in the city of Encinitas, prevailing speeds of 56 miles per hour would have a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact on public health and safety in that it would increase the risk of collisions involving pedestrians and vehicles. The resulting unsafe conditions impact any pedestrians from the project who desire to reach an off-site location. The current bicycle lane is not buffered from vehicular traffic, increasing the risk of collisions with vehicles and making it difficult for drivers to maintain the three-foot separation required by state law. The lack of uniformity in the roadway cross-section along its entirety increases the risk of collisions because the sudden change in the alignment of the roadway can affect driver expectations and behavior by disrupting visual cues for drivers. Finally, as seen throughout the state, and most recently with the Palisades Fire, having appropriate and adequate evacuation routes can be the difference between life and death. Portions of the city of Encinitas are highly prone to wildfires, especially in the community of Olivenham. The fire department has identified the Olivenham Fire evacuation route, outlining the emergency evacuation route for all residents of Olivenham during a wildfire, including Al Camino Real, because it's one of the direct routes from the Olivenham community and can serve as an alternative to the I-5 if it is jammed. The city adopted Public Road Standards identifying the requirements for street, sidewalk, and bicycle improvements. Al Camino Real is designated as a prime arterial roadway per the city circulation element and requires three vehicular lanes on the east side with a 10-foot-wide parking lane and 10-foot-wide parkway that includes a five-foot sidewalk as shown in the section. The public road standards require additional right-of-way for a bikeway. The city's bikeway plan requires a Class 2 bikeway in this portion of Al Camino Real. The public comments received during the public notice period were generally in opposition to the project citing concerns for increased traffic congestion, density of the project, and lack of public improvements along the frontage of Al Camino Real that are consistent with development to the north and south of the subject parcel. Staff are generally in support of the housing development project, including the requested density bonus and requested waivers. However, the requested concession to provide no frontage improvements would result in significant adverse public health and safety impacts to pedestrian safety and accessibility, bicycle safety, traffic safety, and evacuation time in the event of an emergency that cannot be mitigated. The staff, therefore, recommends that the application be continued to allow the applicant to prepare plans showing the required frontage improvements and coordinate with any applicable agencies, including but not limited to the California Coastal Commission. Staff recommends that the planning commission continue the project to date uncertain with direction to the applicant to return to the planning commission review with complete right-of-way improvement plans with the least impact to the wetlands and adjacent vegetation pursuant to the recommendations of the city engineer and include all applicable studies. The applicant shall also coordinate the public right-of-way improvements with the city and any applicable agencies, including but not limited to the California Coastal Commission. And this concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any clarifying questions for staff?
It's more of a clarifying, I've got lots, but clarifying question for the process this evening. Staff has requested that we continue the project. So in the big scheme of things, if we do continue, does this count? First of all, is this the, this project has come before us a couple of different times. I don't know if I'm going out of order here, Chair or Council, but the macro question before we get into it is, this project's come to us a couple of times before, I believe, to the planning commission. And this is a- And this is a new project, correct? So is this the first time in the clock of five?
So you're correct that state law establishes a five, a five-public hearing limit. This is the second public hearing on this particular item. You are correct that more than a year ago, there was a different version of this project, but for this particular project, this came before the Planning Commission six weeks ago or something like that, and that item was continued to this hearing, whatever the exact date, I don't remember, but fairly recently.
Right.
So this is the second public hearing.
So if we continue, we follow staff's recommendation and we continue, this is number two without public discussion?
So staff's recommendation would be that this be continued to a subsequent meeting. We do not have any resolutions before you, so it would be very difficult for you to approve a resolution and make findings because those are not before you at this point.
So thus, it doesn't count as...
So this would count as one of the five?
It would count as one of the five.
So presumably, it would be continued to another meeting and the Planning Commission would have the option at that time of whether to take action at that third hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like to ask your questions, too, of staff?
No, I'll wait my turn. I have a laundry list of questions for staff, but well, I'll wait.
Are you sure? You've got the mic now.
Got the mic now? All right, let's rock.
I will ask to, if I may, jump in. If I could ask to that end of prior meetings, could you tell us if improvements to that frontage had been discussed or what the outcomes of those conversations were on prior approvals?
Sure. So, to be clear, they are considered two separate projects. The project that was approved in 2023, although it went under the same name, is considered separate because it was withdrawn. So I just wanted to establish that. The 2023 version of the project did have public improvements along El Camino Real.
In any of the prior discussions of roadway improvements, was an intersection discussed or crosswalks?
That I don't know.
And in the current one in front of us, do we have... It doesn't seem like we have any indication that a crosswalk or traffic lights or anything like that would be part of this.
If I may, defer to Dan, our traffic engineer, who's in the room at the moment.
Great, thanks.
I can speak on behalf of the previous project. We did look at intersection improvements, the traffic signal. It wasn't warranted. Also, there was an issue in terms of alignment with... Across the street, the driveways didn't align. It was kind of... It was diagonal, so it didn't look... It looks, in terms of feasibility study, with our traffic engineering department.
Thank you.
And just for the record, that was Andrew Maynard. He's our planning manager. He worked on the 2023 version of the project. Just wanted to say that for the record, that was not Dan, the traffic engineer.
So some of these are going to be rhetorical, but I appreciate the process. This site is a by-right site under the housing element, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So much of the staff report revolves around the fact that it is a housing element site. It is a by-right site. It's eligible for the housing density bonus, the upgrade to R30. So a lot of this is really framed by that.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. The initial application had the project spanning a much larger portion of the site. In your presentation, there was no mention of... In... Of it being... This particular presentation or this project, of the local coastal plan, is the way the application has been submitted. Is this project subject to the local coastal plan and thus, appealable to the Coastal Commission as it's been presented tonight?
So the project is located within the coastal zone. So in that by itself, it would be subject to review according to the local coastal program. That's one component. The next component is that the area that is within Lux Canyon Creek...
Right.
There is a 50-foot buffer required per the city's standards and then 100-foot buffer from the outermost edge per coastal commission standards. And that 100-foot buffer area from the outermost limits would be within the appealed jurisdiction of the coastal commission.
So could you pull up a map from your presentation and highlight the approximate distance? So what I'm trying to figure out is, is the current plan as presented impacting the Lux Creek setbacks?
So to clarify, I'll just, while she's pulling up the plans, the current project proposal is not within that 100-foot buffer as the design is set today. That is not including the right-of-way improvements.
Okay. One of the issues is the ingress and egress of the site. So in the prior application, was there ingress and egress to the project site? Oh, thank you. We'll go back to the... So if you could show me, is that dotted line what I should be focused on?
Sure. So there are several lines that are shown on this particular plan, and so I'll explain a little bit here. The... And I'm going to zoom in here. So just for context, for orientation, El Camino Real is right here on the west. In the north here, on the top of the page, you see Sage Canyon Drive. So we're going to zoom in a little bit just so that we can see these lines better, but I wanted to provide you some context. So if we were to scroll in here, there is a dotted line that is red and dotted that kind of follows along here. And they're saying, okay, 100-feet wetland setback. And the wetland outermost limits is shown in this very faint light green here, and it kind of meanders along according to the alignment of the creek there. But generally, this is the line. And so if we were to continue to follow it down... Oop, that's a big jump. That's an even bigger jump. Sorry about that. So as we follow along here, the edge of the property, as the project is designed today, right now, as we're looking at it, is not considered to be encroaching into that 100-foot buffer. And so I think that's maybe the answer you're looking for? Was there more information you'd like?
No, no. If it were encroaching into the buffer, I guess that sets down a different path of approvals or different restrictions that are not waivable in terms of state density bonus law. So they're... By being... By citing the project where they are, they've not encroached upon the wetlands.
Yes, so if by citing the project where it's currently located, they're not located within the coastal commission's appealable zone. So separate from the density bonus provisions, essentially, they wouldn't be... Their coastal development permit in and of itself would not be appealable.
Okay.
I mean, the project could be appealed through city council, but not through the coastal commission.
Okay, can I jump in here, request, just as a...
Please.
Going, moving on from that, but related. But any... While the setting of this particular project is without that, is outside of that zone, any improvements along El Camino Real would be within the zone?
Correct. Yes, would... Yes.
So then, to follow along that line of questioning, by asking for a concession of not improving the road along El Camino and the bike paths and all the other suggestions by the city engineer, that is one way to avoid the process that would be appealable to coastal commission. Is that a logical conclusion?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. All right. Bear with me as I go through this. On the retaining wall, has the city ever approved a project with a retaining wall as high as they're asking for?
Yes. Pyraeus Point would be another project within the city that has been approved with relatively high retaining walls. I don't know the exact height, but I know that that one was also tall.
And that was also a state density bonus law project asking for a waiver for the height limit, right?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay.
I think it was 30 feet.
30? Oh, thank you. At 75 feet 2 inches, what is the tallest building in the city of Encinitas that you can think of right now, and would this be one of the tallest?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Anybody remember what the height of Quail Gardens was, is, proposed to be?
Hello, Commissioners. This is Scott Drapkin, Director of Development Services. Certainly, we might not have some of these answers, and we were mostly focused tonight on the continuance request and the concession. This is obviously a good question. It's very appropriate for reviewing for the waiver request. A lot of these questions, if we don't have the answers, we'd be more than happy to go back and review for them. We'll be taking notes. I do recall that there was at least a housing project that well exceeded 50 feet, though.
Right.
But I can't say for sure 75 feet.
I understand. I realize that once we determined that this was going to be a number two out of five, I kind of feel compelled to ask some questions that we might not have answers for tonight, just to put them on the record and understand that you're not going to know every answer to every question I ask tonight. But I think it's important to just kind of put it out in terms of context, in terms of what the applicant is proposing in the size. So these are just, like I said...
Absolutely. And like I said, these are great questions, and we'll be taking notes to make sure we do return with some of these requirements when we go back and do the complete review of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Could you guys maybe remind us what happens if all five meetings are completed without a decision being made by the body that they're in front of? Is that an approval of the project?
It's effectively a denial of the project.
I have a question for staff. So, being that this is more than a half-mile from the transit stop, is the height of 75 feet allowable even with a waiver of some sort? Because I thought, I thought if it was within a half-mile of transit, you get 33 feet above allowed, but it's not within a half-mile. So I'm confused why they get so much height.
Commissioner, my name's Barbara Kouts. I'm outside counsel for the city. Your city attorney and I were just exchanging. You'd like me to answer this question. If a project's 100% affordable and within half a mile of a transit stop, then there is... Then the project is entitled to a fairly large number of concessions and to three stories, but no waivers. But that only applies to a 100% affordable project, and such a project also has no density limit at all? So it doesn't apply to this particular project?
Thank you.
Your mic, Bobby.
Did, in the staff review, let's assume that for discussion purposes, this is a very tall building in the city of Encinitas. Is any reference... I didn't see it in the report from the fire department's ability to handle a facility of this size and this height. Do we have the physical capabilities to handle something of this height?
So I don't like speaking for the fire department because I don't carry a badge, but I will take a crack at it here. Again, Scott Drapkin, Development Services Director. The project was reviewed by the fire department, the city's fire marshal. The fire marshal reviewed the different heights, materials, other ingress, egress, all of the important fire codes related to sprinklers, related to firewalls. You name it, they went through it and gave it their nod to say, continue. It's in compliant with the current fire standards. There will be fire conditions required with the project, like most projects of this nature, where they're multifamily and high-density.
Right. So the fire department looked, I know the engineer did, but the fire department looked at the ingress and egress point of 120 units, evac component, assuming two people per unit. That's 240 people exiting onto that circular driveway and then exiting, probably going left based on the evacuation route, across three lanes to go southbound onto El Camino Real. And there's a comment in staff report? Or is there a comment in the memo from fire department to staff approving that?
The fire department did review it from an evacuation perspective and then a potential impact of evacuation for the project and other sites within the area. And basically agreed with staff specifically in regard to safety element compliance with regards to evacuation of the other areas, more or less, easterly. And agreed with the city engineer, who, or assistant city engineer, I should say, Mr. Nutter, with regards to an evacuation inconsistency and therefore, agreed with staff's concerns with the approval or review of the concession request to not provide this.
So there was some concern by the fire department as it relates to the evacuation plan relating to the development and the proposed population of the site? So there's some concern somewhere written in by the fire department, back to the engineer?
Yeah, I... It would be... I'd be hard pressed to say that they had specific concerns with that, but they didn't disagree with our concerns related to compliance with our general plan.
Thank you. Can you think of... Can staff think of any other project? Maybe it's Pyraeus because there's such a high retaining wall, where we've had such a concession for the slope invasion. You know, we're going, if I recall, our code calls for 10% and they're asking for 28. And, you know, again, all of this is happening because the original plan was a little broader in terms of its footprint. They've clearly gone back and proposed a project that eliminates the concerns of Lux Creek, but now we've got us squished into a smaller site to make it feasible. They've gone higher. So that means also they're going into the slope. So that's a business decision. I get it. But is there any other precedent that you can think of that shows such an impact into a slope that we've approved in the last 10 years?
Yes. Moonlight Apartments. That was also a project that I was on.
That's at the northwest corner of Quail and Encinitas Boulevard?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that about 20? I mean, do you recall if it's 28, 30? Is it... I know it's a hillside there.
I don't recall, but I know it was a significant amount of the site.
Okay.
I'm also told by our planning manager, who has intensive institutional knowledge, that the project, the Pyraeus project, like you mentioned also, it had...
Had a... It backed into the slope. It's right on the north side, it did.
Correct.
I guess it also went into the east side of it because that's where the retaining wall is. Let's see. Have the incentive or concession that the applicant or the applicant's manager has been involved in other projects in the city? I think they were involved with the Sunshine Gardens project. Do you know if they asked for a waiver of the frontage and road improvements on that project?
So I'll allow the applicant to speak on their behalf when they come up, but I believe they did not.
Okay. But they are on this one. There seems to be a theme here. I'll see if anybody else wants to talk as I go through these. I'm, again, trying to talk with staff and not trying to, but jump in.
Anyone else have other questions while Bob's clicking?
As I'm clicking.
Susan?
I have a question about the Encinitas Municipal Code Grading Erosion and Sediment Control, which applies for everything greater than 10 feet in height for grading. And it says that there should be contoured transition grading to retain natural topography and vegetation and cause the least... to retain natural topography and vegetation and cause the least amount of disturbance. However, this project scoops away a great deal of earth higher than 10 feet. And so I'm not sure. I believe they're asking for a waiver, or is that a concession for that? But it seems really excessive.
Yes, it's a waiver.
On page four of the...
It does not conform to our city site conditions that are typical. It would be more natural to follow the topography with a stepped-up foundation. However, if they did, it would be even taller, of course.
Can staff remind us how long the section is of public improvement on El Camino Real that they're asking for the concession for? Is it 450 feet?
Sure, yeah. This is Dan Nutter, city engineer. That's exactly right. It's roughly 450 feet.
Okay, so the project as is presented today would leave, the developer would leave 450 feet with no sidewalks and no buffered bike lane and no improvements at all along El Camino Real?
And no third lane.
And no third lane. And the rest of those things, do they exist both to the north and to the south of the project?
They do, yes.
And if the applicant wasn't responsible for doing the improvements on El Camino Real, would it then become a project that the city would have to pay for, fund and do?
Right, so the standard is typically that for, especially in these areas of El Camino Real, a development, when it goes in, typically does these improvements, which is what we saw both to the parcel to the north and the south. If an improvement is left undone, for whatever reason may be by a development, the city would be on the hook for being the one that would have to do that improvement, yes.
Would there be any kind of requirement for the city to do it? Or would it be a project that would then be, had to be funded for the design and development, and then again funded for the project to be completed?
Right, exactly. And since this is in our circulation element, it is a prime arterial. The intent by the city in our master plan is that it is built at its full width at some point in time. There would have to be, if this was not completed by the development, as is standard practice, then there would have to be funding allocated and found and attributed to a newly created project for the city to create a capital project to implement.
Thank you.
So to be clear, the church, I believe, is to the south, put a sidewalk in and expanded the road. The Belmont Village and the apartments on the other side, there's also, I think there's two. There's Belmont Village and something else on the west side of the street. Also, Business Ventures found a way to put the sidewalk in and do the road improvements. But this application doesn't seem to have the capital and therefore needs the concession and asking the citizens of Encinitas, which is not in our budget, to go ahead and fund that. So it's a rhetorical question. Everybody else has done it. They don't want to, based on this application. Based on this application. Whoever wants to answer that. Again, it's a rhetorical question. I just want to make sure that everybody else has done it. They don't want to, based on this application.
They are requesting a concession.
Concession, correct. Okay. On page four of the staff report, there's a reference to the appeal to the Coastal Commission A6-ENC 23-0045. Why is it the Coastal Commission is able to deny something in a habitat area, an encroachment on steep slopes and impacted wetlands, and the city of Encinitas cannot?
I think maybe that's a little bit of a misinterpretation.
Okay.
So the Coastal Commission has appeal authority over that wetland area, as we spoke before. The city also has permit jurisdiction in that area. So in the case of the project that you are referencing from 2023, the city reviewed that project in compliance with the local coastal program and was able to make findings according to that program and approved it because it met the development standards in the local coastal program. However, there are times where the Coastal Commission may not have the same review, the same analysis. They may not look at it the same as city does. They may not agree. And so in this case, that is what happened. The Coastal Commission did not agree with the approval of the city, and so they appealed it. However, that did not constitute a denial because the project never submitted to the Coastal Commission to go through their process of permitting, and so it only got to appeal, and that's as far as it went.
So Coastal didn't rule or make a decision that it was denying the project because it never ruled on it? It just said that it was concerned about it, I guess.
Correct. Yeah, I guess that's a good way to put it, yes.
They didn't make an edict or a verdict of approval or denial. Okay. All right. Talked about the height.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So the projects to the north and south on the same side of El Camino Real as this project, do any of them have the Lux Creek running through their properties?
Yes. On Sage Canyon Drive to the north, there's a subdivision. That subdivision has Lux Creek Canyon as well, and they had to deal with similar issues.
And there were wetland impacts that that development did incur as part of the project?
And per the engineering memorandum, it also mentions the creek impacts for nearby projects as well. So it identifies that.
Thank you.
A little bit more detail. I'm going through my list, sorry.
Anything else, Bob?
I think we can probably wait to deliberation.
Okay, sounds good. All right, would the applicant like to give a presentation?
You have the clicker for the presentation?
It's right here.
Okay, cool.
And you have 10 minutes.
Okay, and before I start, I have responses to some of those comments the staff couldn't answer, so we're getting into that. I'm happy to answer any of those questions. Superpointed, so glad you're bringing them up. You ready?
If you could, when you speak, if you could speak into the microphone, it helps us keep record of what's said.
What I'm gonna say.
You can raise the whole...
No, I'm a short guy. I don't need to raise anything, but thank you. Flatter me. So...
They gotta pull it up there.
They gotta pull it up. Okay. My name's Austin Wormers. I'm the owner representative for Sage Canyon Project. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for finally hearing this tonight. Technically, I think this is the third, so when we talk about it later. So I appreciate your guys' consideration for approval tonight. A little bit about me. If you guys don't remember, Wormers is a family-owned company. We've been a part of San Diego for three generations. I care deeply about preserving what makes Encinitas such a special place we all call home. Wormers is not a traditional developer. We buy, build, and hold. And at Wormers, I strive to build projects to make the community a better place to live in, which I believe the Sage Canyon Project will do so. To present the details of the project, I'm gonna hand it over to the project manager, Patrick. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Hello, Commissioners, city staff. My name is Patrick Zabrocki, and I am the project representative for the Sage Canyon Apartments. And as an overview, the project site is located in the south-central portion of the city, which is known as the new Encinitas community area. It is located at the southeastern corner of the El Camino Real and Sage Canyon Drive intersection. The existing site is undeveloped and is approximately 5.23 acres. A great feature about this site is that it is conveniently located along a major corridor, making for easy access for residents to the Encinitas Village Shopping Center, just over one mile to the north, and a short three-mile drive to the closest beach. This property is no stranger to the city of Encinitas, as it was a property assessed and selected to be a candidate site in the city's 2021 Housing Element Update. Known in that document as Site AD1, it was designated as a rezoned site to allow for 30 units to the acre, which means that any developer can use state density bonus law. And when combined with Assembly Bill 1287, they can attain 100% density bonus and develop up to 314 units. However, we've heard from the community that density is the biggest issue. And with that consideration, we are only proposing 120 units, even though we are allowed to build many more by right. Now, out of the 124 rent apartment units, 24 will be reserved for residents of low income to comply with the density bonus law and to satisfy our inclusionary housing requirement. We propose to include studios, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units that range in size from 561 to 1,130 square feet. For parking, state density bonus law only requires that we provide 126 parking spaces, but we felt that that's not enough for our project, and we're proposing 170. It's also important for us to preserve as much of the native habitat as we could, so through minimizing our footprint, we were able to preserve in perpetuity approximately 2.5 acres on-site. Now, our traffic study identified that the intersection for this site entrance is experiencing a below-standard level of service with the way things are now. We also heard the stories from the Sage Canyon residents about the traffic conditions there. So with the proposed approval, we are proposing to include striping to Sage Canyon Drive to define the left and right turn lanes, removal of a portion of the El Camino Real median striping to delineate the intersection, addition of turn arrows in the median, installation of signage for north and southbound traffic, and the expansion of pedestrian facilities to include a bike lane with safety buffer. According to the traffic study modeling, these much-needed modifications will raise the intersection's level of service to an acceptable standard. Now, since the site has undergone substantial review and scrutiny by the city and the public as an approved site in the housing element, we are only required to obtain two permits, the design review permit and the coastal development permit. As previously detailed by city staff, the project complies with the design review regulations and the local coastal program policies. Now additionally, in exchange for providing 20% deed-restricted affordable units, California State Density Bonus Law allows for up to two concessions and an unlimited number of waivers from certain design standards. Given the numerous site physical constraints, financial challenges, as well as a desire to minimize our footprint and to reduce environmental impacts, the project as designed requires one concession and six waivers, as outlined on this and the next slide. Now, the number of waivers and the concession are a testament to the challenges to build in one of the many hilly areas in Encinitas, and as we were talking about, the slopes. But doing so is a fairly common practice in the city. For example, here are three projects that we are all familiar with that are built into many hillsides of Encinitas, the Moraya Resort, the Best Western on Encinitas Boulevard, and more recently, the Moonlight Apartments project. Now, to get a better idea of what the project could actually look like, we've included some simulations from certain points around the site. The view here on the left is of the project as if you were driving southbound on El Camino Real. Then the image on the right is a closer view of what it would look like at the intersection of El Camino Real and Sage Canyon Drive. Now, for these two, the picture on the left is a view from if you were driving northbound on El Camino Real, and the project's on the right side there. And this one also shows our 260-foot setback from El Camino Real, which includes, you know, our protected habitat in between the building and the road. Now, this image on the right is a simulation from our neighbor's view to the east from the lookout at the end of Lorimer Lane, looking out to the west. And as you can see, this visually depicts that our project is much lower than our eastern neighbors, and it would not impede any views. Now, to further that point, we've included this slide, which shows the elevation differences from our eastern neighbors. And as you can see, the highest point of the project will be over 40 feet below that Lorimer Lane vista point and homes along the ridge to the east. Now, that previous slide showed the elevation differences, but this slide shows an aerial view to gauge the horizontal distances from everybody around us. So not only are we 40 feet below our eastern neighbors, we're also 390 feet away from them. We're also 270 feet away from our northern neighbors, and additionally, our setback from El Camino Real is approximately 260 feet, which, looking at all these setbacks, we are well above the requirements because we know the community's concerned about the visual impact, and we're doing our best to tuck this project away while working within the other requirements, considerations, and constraints of the site. Now, during our outreach efforts, we also heard that massing of the building is an important aspect of how people will view the project. Although it can be difficult to tell from those renderings, this colored diagram of the western side of the building shows how much we broke up the depth of the different sections of the building. So it's not one big block, but it has numerous variations in the facade. In that way, the natural shadowing and the distancing will help break up the structure's visual massing. And the building will have lots of residential, common, and landscaped areas with all the quality amenities that we know our residents will be excited for, including a fitness center, indoor community area, large open space promenade, interactive community courtyard, and barbecues, fire pits, and all the great stuff that everybody wants to see in their apartments. Now, as I'm presenting the entirety of the Sage Canyon Project for your consideration, we unfortunately learned recently that the city staff is again recommending a continuance. This time is based on the denial of our density bonus law concession related to frontage improvements along El Camino Real. And as a reminder, under California law, we are entitled to this concession unless the city can prove that without the improvements, our project would cause a specific and adverse impact on public health and safety, and not just claims. The law requires substantial evidence backed by facts proving a direct connection between our project and that public safety hazard. So according to the staff report, they're outlining three major points, that the sidewalk, the buffered bike lane, and a third northbound travel lane will be leading to these safety hazards. Now, the first one is a sidewalk, where the staff claims that leaving the sidewalk as is creates a significant pedestrian safety impact. But what's the evidence? In that letter, they don't cite, they only cite broad national studies, not project-specific data. No pedestrian crash history, no site-specific evidence linking our project and this segment to an adverse hazard. Number two, the bike lane. The staff claims that not including the full-length buffered bike lane significantly increases the risk of bike accidents. Again, what's missing? Any evidence of actual bike accidents in this location?
You can keep going.
Thank you very much. And no data providing how our project would create this direct and significant safety impact. And the third claim is that not adding a third northbound lane would result in unsafe conditions to any motorist who travels through the El Camino Real corridor. Their evidence? A reference to design guidelines, and when discussing the evacuation model, showing that a difference of about four seconds. Not substantial evidence of a significant, direct, unavoidable safety impact. Even our mutually agreed-upon traffic study concludes that the addition of this 120 apartments do not create an adverse traffic safety impact. So the reality of the situation is clear. The city's research shows zero pedestrian, bicycle, or vehicle collisions at this frontage. Staff claims are relied on general research and policy references, not site-specific evidence. And the law is clear: without substantial project-specific proof, concessions must be granted. Our project is thoughtfully designed, contributes meaningfully to the city's housing goals, and delivers 20% very low-income units. Despite that, this process has already been delayed for over a year with continuances and last-minute staff denial claims. and last-minute staff denial claims. This is another unfounded delay tactic. So we respectfully request that the commission reject the staff's unsupported findings and approve the project on the facts and merits of the project itself. Remember, despite the denial of the concession, the staff report is actually recommending approval of the project. Why? Because of the project's positive characteristics, characteristics and strengths, including things like providing high-quality housing opportunities that are also environmentally friendly. And as you can see in this list, we've packed the project with green features with the goal of minimizing the environmental footprint of the project for the benefit of the future generations. And an added bonus of all these efficient features is that it will also lower the cost of living for our residents. And as you consider your decision for this project, I request that you not only base your decision on the merits of the project, but also consider the times that we are in. I think it's easy to say that the housing crisis has touched us all in some way, and housing has gotten to an extreme situation where there isn't one solution to the problem. However, approving projects that provide more housing in the right places will incrementally Now, lastly, I would like to point out that the units from the Sage Canyon Apartments Project will contribute to the city meeting its state housing requirements. But also, it is very important to consider that the city of Encinitas and its residents have been planning for this specific project in this location for many years through the preparation of an end adaption of several long-range planning documents. And as you've heard from the city staff report presentation, the Sage Canyon Project is consistent with those planning documents and will help the city achieve their established housing goals and make the city of Encinitas a better place to live. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions for the applicant.
Do we take those now?
Is that?
The questions from the applicant or after the public speaker?
We go to public.
You can ask now, and actually, I have one too, so.
Sure.
Excellent.
Hopefully, we can answer them all.
Do you propose, I didn't see it in the drawings, any rooftop?
Screening?
Well, access to the rooftops for entertainment purposes?
Oh, no, 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 no.
On this project?
No, there's not like a rooftop deck or anything.
Not like Piraeus or other projects where there's rooftop decks?
No, there'll be a fire hatch and things like that for a TPO roof, but that's it. There's not, it's not an accessible area for residents.
My only other comment was in the conclusion, yes, the city has been identified this site for development, but let's be clear that they haven't seen this project as you've designed it. So yes, the city has definitely had this site on, and it was voted on by the city residents. It's a Housing Element site, but you also have to give us consideration to the fact that we haven't seen this project as you are proposing it. And we saw one project, and now we're seeing a different project. Much like other projects in the city, you're not, you're not the Quail Garden site on the Baldwin site, but that was one project, and then it came back in Four Towers, and it came back in Two Towers. Now, we're looking at your project that was done one way, and now we're looking at it another way. And I'll turn it back over to the question on the units.
Yeah, you are correct. The clarifying thing that I wanted to make sure is, is it's taken us just for you to hear this project, not the old one. You asked pointed questions, other people did too, and a couple of the staff statements were incorrect, and I'm happy to clarify some of the incorrect statements that were made about the previous project. But the, this project has been in front of you, has been in front of you twice. So once I got continued, before that, I begged staff to just schedule me. I'd been sitting in limbo for half a year with no, with nothing scheduled. I reached out, I complained to the planning commission about it. They continued me last time and wouldn't even let me talk about the project. I'm happy tonight that you get to hear, I get to hear your voice, and I'm happy tonight I'm going to hear the community's voice. It's been a long time to get here. It's, you'll hear frustration in my voice. But it comes from passion, not from any of yours. I get it that this is the first time that there's merit here, so I love your questions. Keep them coming. And I think he's going to ask me why I think it's three, because I went to the CPP, which I think counts as a public hearing, which would be the third. It was disappointing that the city did not come with a full staff report for a recommendation, regardless if it was an approval or a denial. I wanted the chance for you guys to vote.
So the CPP is for this project and not for the prior project?
That's correct, sir. And technically, I did two of them. A lot of people were at both of them. The city only counted one of them. They said I did it too early, because what I wanted to do was talk about density and scale and things like that, because this, this project's not easy, right? You brought up a bunch of point questions, then there'll be more, like, why did you do this? Why did you that? There's a bunch of trade-offs that you have to make to have this site. You have to increase the wall size, or you flatten out the building. If you flatten out the building, you increase density. And which one do we give and take? And so on the first one, the first CPP, which city technically doesn't count, I showed 300 units. I showed 250 units, roughly, don't quote me on this, 180 units, a smaller density one, to get the feel and the conversation. So it's, so it's actual community input. And the big thing is I heard from the community was like, what if, there's so many people, we have a small cul-de-sac, how does that feel? And I said, you're probably right. Me putting 300 units here is probably wrong. I drove here and saw the monstrosity next to the Pancake House, and I'm like, I didn't like that as a developer. I didn't want this site to be that, even though I technically can, and I can jam a bunch of units in here. I have to make trade-offs, so I have to get taller, I got to pull the building back. The other thing that was a big point was if you put a building right next to the road, like you do at the Pancake House, you turn that corner, and there's a big building there. So what do you do? You take the building and you pull it way back as far as you possibly can to alleviate that sort of feeling of a building, that that's not what our community really is. So that was all part of the discussion that the staff didn't really give us credit for, but throughout this project, we haven't got a ton of credit from staff. That's why I've been begging to be in front of you guys.
Here we are.
Yep.
I have a question.
Okay.
In the presentation, you mentioned that you were installing a bike lane with a safety barrier. Where is that?
Patrick, Patrick will know. It's, it's in front. There's a part of our traffic study. Can we pull back up?
There is, the yellow.
Our, our project actually, you're correct. I'm not doing the whole, for, the whole 100 or 450 feet, like the neighbor said. It's a, it's a portion of it that we're doing. So you could see, I don't have a pointer, this small, this triangle here, or rectangle here is the bike lane in the yellow box.
Right.
So here's the, and so it's not the full length, it's a portion of it. But the project, so where it sits today, because I know stuff made some, implied some false, I don't know if it was intentional. I'm going to give him the benefit of the doubt. It wasn't intentional. For where the project is today, the traffic standing and the safety is in a higher state than it is now. This was a big discussion last time in our last project. And for clarity, I wasn't doing the full road improvements on the last projects that this committee approved. I did a portion of it. There was a portion of a bike lane, a portion of the improvements I was going to do, that this time, you could imagine from 2023 to now, what the financial challenges is for somebody who's in real estate. If you're trying to buy a home now, it's double the cost in interest rates. There's a lot of variables that are very different in today's market. There are other projects that have been given areas where, where they've had relief, maybe not to this degree, Commissioner, but, but there has been, and I can point to a few, and some of them I'm involved in. So it was another inaccurate claim by the staff.
Can I go back to my, my bike lane question?
Oh, sorry.
So your bike lane is only the portion of the project that's to the south of the driveway?
Yes.
Is that what you were saying? Is that what you were trying to point to?
What I was trying to-
I know it's difficult for you, because you don't have a pointer.
Yeah.
But is it the horizontal yellow line that's to the left of the driveway? That's your, that's your bike lane?
It was my architect, who knows?
Okay.
So here is the, here's the bike lane, or the area right here.
So you're not extending it on the others, on the north side of the?
North side over here?
Yeah.
No. I think there's already a bike lane, if my memory serves me correct, that's already there.
So what portion, what portion are you missing? Because you said it's not the entire, is there?
Oh, I was responding to a community member saying the 450 feet, I don't know exactly what the physical length of the, that improvement here.
You, we don't know how long you're proposing to build, what, what's the length of the one you're proposing to build?
I'd have to, yeah.
So it's, it's the portion of the, of the street that kind of dips in right here, where it comes back out. We're leaving this area as is, but we're the part that we can with just restriping without extending down into the wetlands. We are restriping this part of the bike lane that kind of juts down right there, but the rest of the project frontage right here is, is we're leaving as is.
Can you show me, so can you go to, you had a, one of your renderings was, one of your slides was a rendering from the project views?
Yeah.
And it was a photograph on the left. It was looking northbound onto El Camino Real. It was those pictures that you had.
But the, the bike lane's approximately 200.
Right, but I think you might be able to show me better in the photograph that I'm, okay, yeah, so looking at that one.
We're doing the bike lane up, up, up in the northern portion of our property.
Yeah.
This is, this is, would be not ours.
Correct.
And the bump-out area is, is what is, seems to be a concern of the staff, correct? Because by not fixing the bump-out area, you can't do the three lanes. Is that correct?
Correct. What staff is recommending is the full length of a road. So it's a lot more than that. I think it's like 15 feet into there is what we were-
That's a visual of what we're talking about.
Yeah.
It might not be exact, but it's a visual of what we're dealing with.
Yes.
Is that fair?
I think that's a characteristic.
All right. Just fair. Just trying to, for me not having all the history. Okay, thank you.
I thought that was a very good slide showing kind of what some of the concerns are with the sidewalks and the bike lanes and the third lane of traffic.
The, the, I'd like to make a point on, on this, because it's, it's important framework of the discussion we're having tonight. I'm good, Pat. Thank you. Important framework of a discussion we're having tonight. So I'm going to give an analogy, and then I'm going to pull it back to the project so, so it's clear. So a specific hazard, because it's hard for me to defend the following claim: if we improve roads, does it make, does it generally make safer? Yes. If we slow speeds, does it generally safer? Yes. If we add bike lanes, is it generally safer? Yes. Those statements are all inherently, if you're sitting there, like, why would you argue against those things? That's not the claim I'm making. The specific, I'll, I'll change the analogy, is I'm a restaurant kitchen, and I have a broken gas line and it's leaking. That's an adverse, direct thing that affects that kitchen. And you would say, we can't approve that kitchen permit. They have a leaky, they have a leaky gas line. So all of the city's claims, the staff claims, are generalized. They're tonight saying, and adding a bunch of confusion, and the community's going to come up here and go, what the hell, guys? So I want to make this point: the city's claims are just, cooking is dangerous because stoves are hot. There are knives in kitchens, therefore it's dangerous. Those are generally true statements, but they're not direct to the project. They're not a direct link to the project. You have to take my project and put that linkage directly to mine. I'm actually claiming the opposite. I make, my project makes it safer, they're just making generalized claims. So that's the important, that's the argument, the essence of my argument.
Thank you for answering our questions. I have a specific question about parking.
Yes, sir.
So your, your, I think your measure is 1.4?
Yes, sir.
Is that where it stands? And is there, so?
How do I get there?
I don't, I don't think that's specifically my question. My question would be, where would you expect parking to occur outside of that?
Phrase it slightly different. I want to make sure I get the root of the question.
So you've occupied all of your spots?
Yeah.
And where, where would you expect people to park that want to visit residences there beyond that?
Oh, you wouldn't, there's not a good spot. That's why it's-
I believe the only parking is across the street.
Yeah, you would want-
There is no parking on that particular side of the road.
Yes.
And do you anticipate having, like, permits for parking?
No. No, 1.4 for this type of building is a totally accurate, even more so, necessary for, for this type of building.
And so for the record, there will be no permitted parking?
No, sir. No, sir. To give you an example, city of San Diego, other communities, zero parking. The, the shift, there's two, two things that's shifting in my industry. One, people have less cars, because there's Uber and things like that. And two, I have young children. I do not believe that they will be driving in the way that we all drive. The autonomous car, all of those things, I think I'll be retroactive buildings in the, in the future that will be, to figure out what to do with all this parking, because the way we drive is changing.
Susan, did you have a question?
I was going to point out that we have had a lot of crashes and a lot of injuries and fatalities in Encinitas. Our statistics are actually pretty lousy. I suggest you look at the data.
And my comment is, I appreciate the fact that the staff looked beyond a specific incident.
I do too.
What, so as, as somebody who lives here, and there's been some instances here in the city that are quite tragic, is that what we're trying to prevent those from happening. And so the recommendations, without getting into the specifics of the engineer's report, is to anticipate that on behalf of the citizenry, and try to plan road speeds and recommendations from the traffic and mobility, you know, commission and all the others, to make sure we are a safe, safe city, so that we don't have tragic accidents. And to come up and, and stay to us, there hasn't been a specific accident in my kitchen with my knife, doesn't mean that there's not going to be one tomorrow or five minutes from now.
Fair point.
So I, I find it disingenuous that you're looking for some specific data to refute the conclusion of the traffic engineer, that there could be a problem here based on the density and the, the contribution to the traffic that your site will provide. And, you know, you might not agree with it, but I, I do take some offense that you have to have an accident to prove the recommendation is valuable or not, and I, I disagree with that.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
The point I'm, I get your point, which is, we're trying to be parent, to anticipate issues, and staff should bring those up. That's why we run traffic reports, to understand what the level of service in the area is. What I'm trying to point out is the city has a local roadway safety plan, and it shows zero crashes. So when the city makes a claim that says, oh my, it's implied to the community, oh my gosh, if they build this and don't put this road improvement in, he's creating a danger environment. I'm not. That's where I'm coming from. I'm not creating a dangerous environment. We have traffic engineers, their traffic engineers review those reports. It says that. They went farther to muddy up, in my opinion, muddy up where the law, where I'm allowed to ask for a concession. Where, what they're trying to claim is the concession is ill-invised under Density Bonus Law. They're trying to link a safety claim to my project that doesn't exist. That's why I use the analogy of the kitchen.
Okay, I think, I think we need to, to move on.
Yeah. Yeah, appreciate you allowing me. Thank you, Bob.
Okay. I'll open it up to public comment.
Okay.
Wait, 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 before we go, there was a, I'm sorry, Chris.
No, I'm, I'm fine. He, he answered my question. My question was really, how did you calculate there being three public hearings? And I'm comfortable concluding that there are true, truly just two public hearings. I disagree with his interpretation.
Is this number two?
This is number two.
This is number two, not?
I, I'm familiar with his argument, and I disagree.
All right, it's important.
Okay, so we are going to, we'll take a 10-minute break, and we'll reconvene at 8 o'clock.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, let's get started. Everybody could take your seats. Could everyone take their seats, please? All right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Zina, can you call the first three speakers?
Yep. Our first speaker up is Paul Weddle. Following Paul will be Eric Cusick and then Stuart Grauer.
Thank you. And how many speakers do we have? Total?
We have about five with a few time donations.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. I'm Paul Weddle. I live just to the east of this project. I'm up on top of the bluff. I'll be overlooking the roof of this building. In fact, I'll be able to look at the top two stories of it, I think, from my house. We've not been able to get an exact rendering of what it's going to look like from, from the top of the hill, but who knows? I respect that the developer has the right to, to develop this property. But he simply built a project here and given you the information about something that has safety issues to it and the fit is just completely wrong. You touched, Commissioner Whitaker, on the parking. They don't have enough parking. I don't care what he says, there are going to be people there that are going to come. They're not going to be able to park in the area. The only parking they have available directly across El Camino. Can you imagine you saw six lanes, center lane? "Oh, I get home at 9:30. The traffic's not bad. I'll just park over there." Eight o'clock the next morning, he's trying to cross that traffic. Somebody's going to get killed there. So if you want to have an incident of safety, set it up that way. It's going to, it's going to happen. By not putting in any parking on there, there is some parking in front of the churches, but now you have to transport across dirt, the 450 feet that runs down the front of their property. They don't want to fix that. So people are probably not going to go that way. Nice rainy day, they're going to go across the street. Somebody's going to get killed there, in my opinion. Maybe I'm wrong. I hope I am. You talk about the speed limit, you know, you've reduced everything in the city by five miles an hour, but at 50 miles an hour, they're running 56. That's probably conservative. I use that road. I don't want to be one of the ones that has to dodge these people. It just doesn't seem like that's something the city should put up with. The fit, yeah, he can have unlimited waivers. Most people, when you ask for a waiver, you kind of find something to take an edge off of. You don't ask for something that's five times larger than the standard. You want to build a wall at six feet, but no, we want to go to 34 feet. You know, it's just outside the zone of reason with, you touched on it. They're trying to pack too much into a very small zone. 75.2 feet tall. Does anybody know what that looks like in this city? I don't think you do. I asked the question of the city about a year ago, "What is the tallest building we've approved?" I still don't have my answer either. But I tell you, you can go down to Carmel Valley and you can see it. And if we want this city to turn into Carmel Valley, let's start. Let's just pump them up. Maybe he could get his 314 units. We could go to 27 stories tall. Again, I live right above that thing. I look at his kind of deal about insufficient storage space for everybody. He said 44% of the, kind of the space that's there. So every, every waiver that he's asked for, he's just chopped up the things that have made this city kind of what it is. 27 years, I've lived here, it's pretty nice. One other comment, noise. They're going to put all the air conditioning units and mechanical stuff on top of that building. I hope the city is going to be prepared to back us up because I live above it, we're going to hear that noise.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Cusick. He has a slide to show or a video. He has a time donation from Jeff Riggs. Sorry, Jeff, was it Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
All right. Yeah, if you could, this, a lot of you have been questioning about this part of the road. This is me riding with my son on August 24th. So you're going to see everything that we're going to talk about. This is, this is starting in front of the churches where you can see two lanes of traffic, a good buffer and parking. So if you want to hit, I don't know who hits play. So you saw how close that car was and it came into the buffer. There's the Mormon church. Now we're getting to the property. This is the pop-out. There's no sidewalk. There's no buffer. There's no parking. We're going along. The project site's right there. You can see Lush Creek. Paul's house is up on top of the hill. And then it gets in that turn lane and then the buffered space that you're talking about is already there. And then that's the, that dash part, that last 50 feet, that's the part where 170 cars are going to slow down from 50 miles an hour to zero to turn into there. So I think, I think it's a real impact. I don't think it's a hypothetical impact that there's going to be traffic impacts right there. So basically what I'm arguing is that as a city resident of the City of Encinitas, just like they have said that all the other developers that have built in that stretch of Encinitas have paid to improve the road. I don't think it's a concession we should give up. It's a clear safety thing. Cars, it's only two lanes there. Cars are going to have to slow down from 50 miles an hour to zero in that short space that you saw with a bike lane. And there are, you know, I don't know about self-driving cars, but I know there are a lot of e-bikes. My kids have them. There's going to be bikes going up and down this part of the road. The other thing, so what the interim engineer said, and I read your report, I thought it was great. The absence of a buffered bike lane, this is a quote, "The absence of a buffered bike lane along the proposed project's frontage where 120 residential units will be constructed along the highest speed roadway in the City of Encinitas will have a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact on public safety, public health safety," end quote. So that's what your city is telling you. I think that video shows. And if you can imagine 170 cars going in there and out of there every night, and then how, I don't know, going back to the ratio, you mentioned about a 1.4 ratio of parking per unit. In the CPP meeting, I asked you like, "What's typical?", and you mentioned 1.7. That's actually written in the notes. 1.7 might be what you would prefer to do, but because the sites, the constraints are doing 1.4, that means there's likely going to be a lot of cars that aren't going to be parking in there. They're going to have to walk on the dirt to get to the parking to the south or walk across the road and risk, you know, the Frogger game that I used to play as a kid. So I just, I think it's not, it's something for you to consider on that concession. We shouldn't all as taxpayers have to pay for it while for the, I don't know, what the life's, 50-year lifecycle of the building of 120 units of rent can pay off improving the road, like all the other developers, including the two churches. And Westmont, which is the other retirement community across the road that my mom lives at, had to pay for. So I'm, I, I really feel like it's something that, there is a viable reason to deny the concession. I think it's really clear. You go out to the site and you just stand there in that dirt and you will feel it, the safety issues, when you're standing right there. I think that's all I got. So appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Stuart Grauer with a time donation from Kristen Bell. Kristen, thank you.
Thank you. And so, good evening, and thank you, commissioners. And my name is Stuart Grauer. I'm a 34-year resident of Encinitas. And I appreciated your consideration of the heritage trees tonight. That was fascinating to hear, and I want to thank you for that. It's a, it's a big responsibility taking care of trees, and I think there are parallels to this situation right now. I'm here tonight because I think this high-rise project, without major redesign, would bring unprecedented and irreversible harm to our neighborhood, school, and community safety and community character. So I have several points. First off, Lux Creek realignment and safety. The Lux Creek realignment is not a new concern. Years ago, when I considered and had a deposit on that, that property, and actually had an architect to provide renderings, the city made it clear. No development could proceed without realigning Lux Creek. That creek has to be moved. And we were going to pay, like we paid on the other side of the street for the sidewalks and the buffer at the school. The condition was based on widening El Camino Real is one of its last major pinch points that you just saw a great visual of. But you really got to go there and stand there. That's a fast road. Next, ensuring emergency access and pedestrian safety. I think a bicyclist is going to be killed in that section. And preserving Lux Creek, which is a, or fixing it. That's a sensitive wetland and riparian zone. And now approving 120 units before fulfilling this condition would abandon not only the public safety and environmental standards that the city itself has had, but this had for decades. Next, I want to talk about CEQA and density bonus and clarify that. The developers invoking, of course, the density bonus law, but this does not exempt them from CEQA. The project's massive grading, wetland adjacency, and proximity to sensitive habitat clearly trigger environmental review. If they're claiming a CEQA categorical exemption, this appears to violate CEQA guidelines, Sections 15301 and 02, which prohibit such exemptions when natural landforms and protected resources are involved. So please ensure our community that these will be addressed before approval and before creating a range of precedence down the line for our city. Next, briefly, school zone hazards. This is a school zone, yet there's no protected crossing, no emergency access plan, and no mitigation. Tennis Club Drive will become chaotic and dangerous. Even the city staff recommends denying this concession. A child should not have to pay the price for a developer's margin. Next, I want to talk about neighborhood compatibility and the Coastal Act. I've never opposed the development before, but I don't agree with the developer that this high-rise has all the great stuff. Under the city's general plan, the zoning project, under the city's general plan, zoning code, and local coastal program, we trust that the planning commission will determine if this project is compatible in scale, massing, height, and setbacks with adjacent institutions, schools, and homes. It's outside 75 feet plus, appear to omit any consideration of the rooftop gear. This is a drastic grading plan, and the resultant heights of the retaining walls are invoking the famous wall at LA Fitness, unless this project's going to be inhabited by climbers. Those elements are not always apparent in developer plans, like we're supposed to decide on tonight. This is a massive urban structure for the surrounding communities and streetscapes far outside the community character. The developer repeatedly says they need to make enough money again and again, as though community character is determined by the profit margin of the developer. And that's their repeated rationale in the paperwork. At around six stories and minimal setbacks, it fails all compatibility standards. Another thing to explore better before acting, the applicant claims it's outside coastal appeal jurisdiction. That's questionable here because sensitive habitat boundaries can extend beyond the creek itself, and frontage improvements required for safety may impact the creek slopes and riparian areas. Lux Creek and the 100-foot wetland buffer trigger Coastal Act protections. Coastal Commission staff has already raised concerns. And if this project is appealed, which it will be, it will go to de novo review where these deficiencies could even easily lead to denial. So in closing, my first closing point is a question. Wimmer's Property has completed their citizen particip, is that six minutes? Oh, okay. Can I close with my two points? They're both brief.
How much time?
All right, thank you.
Fifteen seconds.
What's that? Thank you. Wimmer's Property has completed the citizen participation program with a completely inaccurate image of the project, and then sent out something called Citizen Participation Plan Final Report. So the question, what kind of a citizen participation, and what kind of final report concludes? In almost every case, we will look into this, or we would prefer not to go this high, but we have to. And then, never another communication. This is not citizenship or participation. That's checking a box. Not the way we've made decisions in our town. Number two, and finally, as planners, please require redesign and updated scientific review before approval, which you can do. You can trigger a review by the Coastal Commission and legitimate mitigation of this project. I hope we'll have a lovely project there someday, but I don't think anyone thinks we're there now. Approving this project design as designed would violate the city's own safety, history, compatibility, and Coastal Act promises.
Okay, thank you.
And it would be out of character with our walkways and bikeways.
Thank you so much.
Anyway, I want to thank the planning commission. I can't imagine how you got through 244-page report and all those letters, and I really appreciate you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have two more speakers. Next up is Steve Marceal.
Great, thank you. Question. Can we pull up the city's presentation of the overhead we looked at earlier in this forum or no?
We can. Which one?
The one we did earlier with the city with the overhead shot.
The overhead shot?
The plans, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Got it.
And then I agree with everything that's been said already, so I can rehash them.
Is it this one?
Yeah, my question was, and this is just from my education, when it comes to fire safety and traffic safety, and it's particularly this, this right here. Sage Canyon Drive, the cul-de-sac, I'm guessing that's like 100, 125 feet, which is probably five or six cars can stack up there. We already stack them up coming out of, I live in Sage Canyon, just to the north. We already stack them up when we're coming out. And dumping in that many more cars, I'm concerned about just anxiety of jumping out. You have more cars waiting in the morning. So I'm not going to rehash all the safety concerns, but it's, I'm not sure if that's considered in these studies. And then, for Lux Creek, from my education, is that a federal waterway, or is that, do we know the answer to that?
We don't typically answer questions.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Well, that would be my question is, yeah. Is it, and then does it, are the necessary federal permits been acquired for the project to advance? So those are my thoughts. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Alex Bernadette.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner, for your time and efforts on this project and your focus. So my name's Alex Bernadette. I'm a primary care physician. My wife and I have lived in Encinitas for the last five years. More importantly, I have two young daughters, two and four years old, so my presence is really on behalf of their safety. And I'll be brief. I think a lot of the conversation about the density bonus laws and the concessions revolve around not having a specific and adverse impact on the public health and safety due to the project. My consideration on the public health front would be, the goal there is to anticipate and prevent adverse events, as was discussed by the commissioner earlier, as opposed to being reactionary towards them. I think there are serious concerns, as Eric brought up, about bike safety due to this project's scope that are not being addressed with the concession that is on the table, in addition to the evacuation and emergency conversations that have already been discussed. I'd like to encourage those in attendance in the commission to review the correspondence from yesterday from my next-door neighbor, Dennis and Susan, regarding CEQA and those considerations as well. And I think there's been a lot of work, and I appreciate the 100-page report that was put together by the applicant and the 244-page report put together by staff. I think that the scope of looking at the 150 feet of frontage maybe doesn't take the whole picture to, in account. It doesn't account for the public health and safety concerns by approving this project to the rest of the El Camino Real corridor. So thank you for your time, and I would like to just support the staff's recommendation on continuing this project for further review. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, thank you. Going to close public comment? Open for deliberation. Yes, yes. Does he, did he need to have time left over from his 10 minutes?
No, so that, we should give the applicant time to respond to the questions that were brought up by the public.
By the public?
The comments from the public.
I tried to write down as many as I could, right, on the fly. So thank you guys all for giving your guys' thoughts. I understand your guys' concerns. I'm trying to address them. Parking, easy solution. I own the buildings. We have parking passes. So people who live in our communities have parking passes. That solves a lot of the concerns. So active buildings I have in the community today, if you go into them, you'll learn. There are signed parking stalls. When I answered the 1.7 to 1.4, random, the city attorney asked me during the break the same question. When you answer that question on the parking ratio, you have to look at the unit mix. So there's always an answer to something. So the unit mix affects the parking ratio. So if you have primarily two bedrooms or three bedrooms, you would want to get to 1.7, 1.8. But because this is more of a one-bedroom, community being 50% ones, you're going to get to a lower parking ratio. That's the reason. It wasn't a bait and switch to your answer. Speeds, I loved this video. It gave a really good representation of what it is. I'm not proposing doing the roadwork. I think that's an important thing that I'm going to continue to say. I'm not proposing it. My project's not proposing it. You guys are pointing out, we'd love to have it fixed. I'm not doing it. So it's not going to get fixed. I'm, I've explained why I'm not required to do that. CEQA, I am exempt. The claim was mistaken. The coastal, I have a letter from Coastal, email from Coastal. I'm out of the coastal jurisdiction. It's been, staff knows it. It was one of their false claims, saying that, well, we're not sure. It's very clear. Stephanie from Coastal said, you're not in it. You're within the 100-foot buffer. They've already reviewed it. I'm not in Coastal. Coastal has looked at it. I've been in open communication, and the city CC'd on every email I send them. So it was totally in a collaboration process. One of the things I want to say is, tonight I'm being continued again. I don't want to be continued. I want to be voted on. I'm not changing the project. This, I want to point out this pattern that has happened to me at the city. The pattern works like this. I've been this project with the staff for years. I've sat fully deemed complete for over a year. I've been waiting for a planning commission hearing for six months, begging to be heard. This is another delay tactic by the city staff to drum up so nobody gets to have a conversation and nobody gets a vote. I'm comfortable, the community's comfortable, to have a vote on it, regardless of the outcome of the vote. I'm comfortable with that tonight. But I think the project's not changing. I haven't heard anything tonight that would say that, and I think we're getting lost. And I'd hate to point out, you know, somebody came up here and said, I drew, I drew drawings on this project 20 years ago. That's what happens when we kill projects. What's not being spoken about tonight are the thousands of people who applied to my other buildings in Encinitas. I actually didn't reach out to them because I thought it would crowd a room, which in retrospect, I should have brought them all. I hate to be pointing this out, but this isn't a representation of a conversation of the full community, the full breadth of who lives in these buildings. And I think the demographic that needs this types of housing hasn't really been talked about tonight. So I think you should take that into consideration when thinking about approving affordable housing, a capital A affordable housing, or a lowercase affordable housing project. And when I say lowercase, it means they can't buy a 2,100-square-foot house. It's not happening, and it's not happening.
Can we get a point of order? Can we, could you respond to the things that the community has brought? Specifically, and that's, I mean, I think, this is your opportunity to respond to that.
I think I, I think I.
And if that's all, then.
If you've done with that, then that's.
I have a question for him.
Yeah.
Is that, can we ask questions? All right. One of the neighbors was concerned about noise. Can you, where the units are going to be placed on the roof, and maybe the architect, are they?
I can answer them.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Condenser units are primarily on most buildings, either in two locations, on a ground floor or on a roof. On several buildings around the community are on HVAC for commercial spaces, like here. They're on the roof. It's very common. We do an acoustical study. They have isolators on them. Do they produce noise? They do.
So they're on, in this particular case, they're on the roof because it's just from a practical standpoint. You can't, you can't pump the AC from ground floor up seven stories, so it's seven stories down, or the condenser units?
The condensers are on the roof.
On the roof.
On this particular project?
Yes.
Based on the chase ways and the architecture, it makes the most sense.
And you'd be subject to the city's noise ordinance associated with that?
Yes, sir. And their screening ordinance as well.
Right, and the screening goes into the height limit, and that's all been discussed in the site plans, right? Terms of all that. Okay, so that was one that I think staff had asked. I think that was the only one. I think the other ones were going to be staff questions, but that was the only one that I wrote down that was a
A community question?
An applicant question to him. All right.
I think we're done with the community questions then.
Okay. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
No, no, we can't.
No.
Appreciate your consideration.
Yeah, you bet.
Yeah.
All right, close. All right. I've got, I've got a question for staff. Another resident discussed school zone. I didn't hear school zone come up in the staff report. Is there anything within the school zone codes that are applicable to this application? Traffic, speeds, anything that, I just wasn't familiar with the school zone overlay or a school zone component?
From a transportation and traffic standpoint, I don't believe that we would be close enough with this development to the nearest school for it to be applicable.
Okay.
I believe we had a question about it being a federal waterway, Lux Creek.
Yes, that was another one.
Right, a question about the designation of Lux Creek. What kind of waterway it is.
So the questions were related to the jurisdiction and the permitting, there would be, we would have to look into that. Some of the other projects did have some jurisdictional reviews. We would do the same thing with that.
Was there one final one?
Lux Creek, oh. I had a question. Was there a VMT, as it relates, we haven't gotten really into the traffic study, but was there a VMT calculation completed? There were some issues associated with, I've heard 170 trips. I don't want to use the word trips because that has a different connotation, but what was in the traffic study? How many ingress and egress were we considering? There was a comment about 170, but I don't know the actual number in your report of VMTs. I'm not sure what the right question is.
Right, so because this project is CEQA exempt, there was
Didn't have a calculation?
Completed.
Right.
Vehicle mile travel analysis. With that being said, I took a look, and my traffic team took a look at an anticipation. With that being said, I took a look, and my traffic team took a look at an anticipated number of trips per day. A unit of this size, probably somewhere between 600 and 700 daily trips in a vehicle. You have, you know, 120 units. You're going to have 200-plus individuals living in this complex. So, that is going to breed not only vehicular trips, but it's going to breed pedestrian trips that are going to go both to the north and to the south of the property. It's going to increase a bicycle need and usage. And as the applicant has stated, they do believe that there's going to be less potential vehicles utilized for their development, which that means there's going to be an increase in pedestrian and bicycle usage coming from their development. There is direct pedestrian access from the development to El Camino Real. So, that is a direct correlation. And even though there are no counts of what that may be, it's, it's pretty easy to identify that there will be an increase. So, that is a direct connection.
Christina, where's the closest bus stop?
So, closest bus stop, I think, is more than a mile away. We had been looking at that for other reasons.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we talked about that when we were looking at the project for the church across the street. And unfortunately, there is not one very close, not one very close to the college either. Unfortunately.
Vice Chair Ryan, if you wouldn't mind.
Is it Santa Fe?
Yes. I just, I wanted to mention a few high-level things that I just wanted to make sure that I clarified was from a staff perspective. You know, this project isn't the norm with regards to the concession request. We, and we put together a large team. We spent hundreds of hours reviewing the project. And I just want to make sure that the commission is really clear on sort of staff's review from a high-level perspective and a background of the review of that staff more or less put in. And then really, more or less, staff's project review perspective and detail. And basically, what I wanted to kind of just mention is say, is, you know, staff supports approval of this project similar to the previous project that was approved by the council. We believe that the project has merit. However, as indicated in detail by staff, we don't support the concession request because it's not developing appropriately with the right-of-way conditions or with the project or the community. It could have issues. And kind of lastly, I wanted to mention that the goal of the city is to work with the applicant cooperatively. We always have been. We've met with the applicant on site. We've spoken to him in 2024 in regards to our concerns about this concession. The applicant's attorney wrote about our concern in a 2024 October letter. So, they knew that we had this concern a long time ago with the concession. But our goals still remain that are, that we want to meet the objective of both the project and the right-of-way here. So, I didn't want to say much more than that, but I just wanted to be clear that for the most part, with the way the state requires us to review these projects and our limited discretion on some of these aspects, we still support the project.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. So, just for a way to like talk about how we're going to handle our discussion tonight, I think it's important to talk about the plan. So, I think what we need to do first is we need to, we need to deliberate on whether or not we're going to follow staff's recommendation for a continuance to a date uncertain or not, and then take a vote on that issue first.
I would agree with that.
And then depending on that vote, we just, we move forward. So, let's talk only about, so let's not talk about the, any of the waivers, okay? Because they're not relevant to the decision on whether or not we're going to vote yes or no for the continuance. So, let's, let's try to stay away from any discussion about the waivers and talk only about the discussion for, about the concession and whether or not we want to vote to continue or not. Okay? So, if anybody wants to start the conversation.
I think I would be in favor of the continuance because I would like to see more data. I would like to know how many fatalities we've had in the past year or two, maybe the last three years would be a reasonable window. I would like to know how many injuries due to crashes. I would like to know, is there a pattern of decreasing safety? Are we, you know, we don't, we not getting enough information for me to feel comfortable making a decision without data? I'm a facts person. I'm a numbers person. And I like to have that information.
I'd like to get some clarification with that continuance means for all of us.
Okay.
Because I'm not understanding that it means come back with data on traffic.
No, I don't, I don't think so. So, it's coming, so really, what the issue is going to be is, we would be voting whether or not to continue it to a date certain for, a date uncertain for the applicant to bring a project back that does not include the concession. And so.
It includes road improvements.
That includes road improvements.
Lane line.
And as we all heard, he says he's not going to do that.
Right.
So, you know, that, that's, that's what it is.
And we don't have a resolution this evening to.
Correct.
The applicant's concern or statement was to accept or deny the project.
We actually can't do that tonight.
Because we don't have a resolution.
Right. We could vote to accept or deny, but it would then have to come back to us with a resolution either way.
Right.
That we'd have to vote on. And in addition, the staff report that we have, well, there's a lot of pages, as pointed out by member of the public, it is not a complete report like we typically see when we're going to vote to approve or deny a project. It's a truncated report that really just focuses on the continuance.
Well, I strongly support following staff's recommendation for the continuance. And I think they have done hundreds of hours of work, and we can't possibly do hundreds of hours here. So, I trust their judgment.
I'll say that I did, I did appreciate that there were some improvements to the roading included in the presentation of the, of the project tonight that I didn't quite catch earlier. And so, I did appreciate that, and I think they were warranted. I can't quite imagine approving the project in the future without road improvements. So, there would have to be some commitment from the city to improve the road there. I would go even beyond what is being requested for improvements. I think that if, for a unit that size, the number of units that are going to be occupied by residents coming and going from that location, crosswalks would be absolutely at least needed. And that probably isn't adequate for a six-lane road. It would need to be a stoplight. Parking was certainly something that came to my mind. There's no parking on that side. If people are going to access the units from there, they would at least need to be across the road safely as well. They would need some sidewalk on that side to access the unit.
Right. Those, those would be things that could be talked about later.
Of course.
Between the city and the applicant.
Right.
And for a stoplight to go in.
Agreed.
They do, they do a whole warrant study.
Agreed. I was only saying that I would even go beyond what was being suggested. That's all. But I agree.
Bob, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think that the applicant answered a lot of questions tonight, and I, and the neighbors brought up a lot of questions. There was a lot of data. There were a lot of comments from the neighbors. There was a lot of correspondence that came through. There was a letter from applicant's counsel, bit threatening, to say the least. But I, in terms of the project itself, I guess I would have to vote for the continuance. It's not a complete package. We don't have a resolution. They can pick a date and come forward. Right now, it would be a date uncertain. I tend to be concerned about the concession because of safety purposes. I tend to support staff's report. I understand this is a by right project. The waivers are pretty much statutory at this point. There's really not much we can do about that, and we've never been able to deal with those waivers on all the other by right projects. So, I get it. But it does come down to just the issue associated with traffic. I mean, at the end of the day, that's the crux of the conversation. They can park a building under, or they can park the building more. That's a business decision. They clearly are doing more than is required by law. So, that's a business decision that they've made, and that's fine. In fact, we're lucky to have those. We're getting 20%, which is a pretty good number. We've seen lower numbers from an affordable standpoint. So, the actual box is providing what the housing element anticipated. It's a little bit taller than probably what most people thought it would be. But in terms of specifically to your question, I would support the continuance. Pick a date certain, write the resolution, and bring it before the organization, the commission so we can vote on it. And they would still then have two, based on the decision, it would be appealable to city council, and they would have two meetings at city council to do it. And I think that's also important.
So, it actually would be to a date uncertain?
Well, they would then negotiate.
Because it would be to a date uncertain because it would require a new, a new project to be presented, to be presented that includes the roadway improvement. Not a new project, but it would, another design that includes the.
Or not. They, they don't have to, well.
Well, that would be the same project that we have now, right?
But we don't have a resol, we have, then we would have a resolution to accept the project or not.
We only do a resol, we only get to the resolution process if we vote to not continue it. Then we would make, then we would deliberate as to whether or not we're going to approve or deny the project.
Right.
Which are two separate votes.
They are two separate votes.
I want to add something that I didn't add previously. Normally, when we look at a project, we ask if anyone has been to the site and so on. And I, I think we skipped that.
Oh, we did skip that. If anyone had any, and I want to. Steve had a conflict, and so.
Yeah, I want to point out that I live in the near proximity to this project, and I bike on that road every single week, and I drive on that road probably every single week. And so, I want to let you know that when they added the bike path that goes across the lagoon, I started biking over to Solana and back at least once a week because it's about a five-mile each way, and it's good exercise. I like it, whatever. But one thing I noticed, on the southbound, the bike lane is pretty nice. And when you're coming back northbound, it's nice up until the improvements end, and then it's pretty narrow. And that road, 50 miles an hour traffic, actually, they exceed the speed all the time. And so, you're riding your bike, and you actually don't have the three feet of separation that the California State Code requires. And so, you feel it's a bit dangerous. And so, you know, we did have a death on El Camino Real a couple of years ago. A teenager was 15 years old, was killed. And I believe that if the staff feels that this is not safe and needs mitigation, further mitigation, I support it. I have a 14-year-old who rides his e-bike to school and back every day, and he likes to ride over to Solana sometimes too, without me, by himself. He wears his helmet. He's a safe bike rider. But still, 50 miles an hour traffic, coming back on that northbound lane on the Sage Canyon side, isn't as safe as it should be.
Okay.
So, I would like to continue.
Okay. So, let, let me go back to Bob to make sure Bob understands.
Please.
What, what is going on? So, our fir, we might just have one vote, or we could end up with two votes. Okay? So, if we vote to continue it to a date uncertain, that's all we're voting on tonight. We're not voting yes or no to the project itself. We're not deliberating at all about any of the merits of the project, the waivers, anything. We're only voting on the continuance. If we vote not to continue, then we will continue to deliberate about the project itself, and then we will vote again, and then we'll ask the staff to bring a resolution. So, it's two, it's two separate votes.
I would like to make the motion to continue the project to date uncertain.
Okay. Just so everybody knows, if we do that, and I'm not saying, I'm only giving you this information. Okay? I'm not, that, we can definitely do that. And just the applicant told us he's not doing it, so we all understand what the ramifications are if we do it. And I, I mean, I will say, I support the continuance as well to a date uncertain. I understand the applicant says he's not going to do those improvements. So, we would basically be saying, we're done with it, and he will bring his lawsuit, is my guess as to how it would proceed. Because if he, if he sticks with his guns, that he's not going to bring something back.
This can be appealed. It can be appealed first.
Yeah.
It can be appealed, so.
Our continuance.
Prior to the court.
This continuance, be appealed to city council?
Can the continuance be appealed to city council?
The decision.
So, so the continuance would, it would be continued to the next meeting, and then you would, and then what you would do is, at that meeting, you would make a final determination. That final determination could then be appealed to the city council.
Okay. But if we just vote to continue to a date uncertain, then it doesn't go to city council.
That continuance by itself is not a denial.
Right. So, it does not go to city council, then?
And the city staff would work expeditiously with the applicant to, you know, try to move this along.
Okay. So, just so we're clear, if we vote to continue to a date uncertain, that decision is not in and of itself appealable to city council, only if we make a decision on the project?
Correct.
Okay.
Stand corrected. At least get a date certain? I've spent six months just to get to this here, here. Sorry for talking out of turn, but.
I don't think that's a request in front of us, unfortunately.
So, I hear from the applicant that they're requesting a date certain. Now, it's certainly within your purview either way to, staff is recommending that it be to a date uncertain because that allows staff to make the necessary coordination with outside agencies, for example, Coastal Commission, et cetera. It depends on whether the applicant will agree, and it sounds like maybe they won't. But then that allows staff time necessary to put things together. It's a very fast turnaround. So, it, so ultimately, I mean, staff can probably speak better to me than I could, but that's my understanding in speaking with staff, the reason that they're asking for a date uncertain.
I can chime in on top in addition to that. So, essentially, staff is asking for the date uncertain with the additional portion of the recommendation that the planning commission requests from the applicant that they provide the right-of-way plans. So, that way, staff can make the determination of the findings on the basis of that additional information in conjunction with coordinating with the other agencies. Of course, that is, the applicant can choose to do that or not do that. And the planning commission, alternatively, you can make that recommendation to request a date certain as well. That's within your purview. But the reason why we're asking for that additional time is because with deliberations regarding plan checks and coordination, there may be not necessarily a date certain with when we could get that information from the applicant and when we could make that deliberation ourselves.
Okay. Can I, can I reopen the public comment so I can have a conversation with the applicant as to what date he was thinking for a date certain? Okay, I'll do that.
And I apologize.
Can you come up to the microphone? Because otherwise, nothing you say is actually recorded.
Oh, sorry about that. I apologize for shouting. I just wanted to make the claim. So, Megan, the, I don't plan to do the improvements, so I'm not going to do anything from today on. So, to open up the further discussion, so you have the staff report, I'm, I thought we'd have the staff report tonight. I have my whole team here so you could vote on it. So, you don't need extra time. I mean, you don't need time to review and plan checks because I don't plan to give you anything else. I've given you the application I'm willing to do. I'm looking for them and the community to vote on this. So, the date certain is next meeting. I'm ready to continue the conversation in great detail.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Vice Chair Ryan, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to make a couple notes. You can sit down if you'd like. The applicant might be very, very ready to attend a meeting next, next hearing. That might be his, his option. But that's not staff's ability at this point. We'd have to reassess where we're going to go with this review. We believe that it's important for staff, for the PC, to make a determination specifically with a continuance in a direction that they return with these plans that staffs are recommending. We didn't have any idea until a recent letter, I think it came in yesterday, that they wouldn't do these things. So with that said, we believe that it's important to at least provide at least maybe no less than a month of review for staff to consider and put a report together, bring back something with detail. This is not a very easy subject matter. There's a lot of things for staff to consider. We have multiple attorneys involved. We have to deal with the HCD, potential consequences. We're dealing on so many levels that it makes it very difficult to make a very fast turnaround for a report. So I just want that mentioned. If it, if it is continued to a date uncertain, staff can work with that a lot better. However, if it's not continued to a date uncertain, we need at least a month.
So my question would be if the applicant's telling us that he's not going to present a plan that, that contains the public right of way. I guess it would be, how much, how much time would you need to put together a report, to do the reports that would include what I'm suspecting then would be staff's recommendation to deny the project because they don't, because you oppose the concession?
At least a month or longer. They need significant time.
At least a month.
Yeah.
At least a month.
That's what he's saying to us. Definitely.
Yeah.
So, so let's talk about that, whether or not we want to continue it.
So just one more, it's, it's not just a month. So if you give us four weeks, it means that in two and a half weeks, we have to have the staff report.
Right.
Completely done. So it's, so when I say a month, I need a month of time plus that time to get it to the report.
So, okay, that's fine. And I want to get a, I want to get a realistic.
I appreciate that.
That realistic timeframe. So we can.
I know it seems nebulous and just sort of uncomfortable that, that date uncertain, but I, you know, given the, given the light of the facts now, I'm sure they'll work as quickly as they can to bring it to a resolution and I have confidence in them to do that.
Okay. And so you would prefer to keep, to continue to date uncertain?
I would be comfortable with that.
With a date uncertain?
Yes.
Okay. Bob?
I'd rather vote on it and part of me, part of me wants to just vote on it and give council three bites at the apple. We've had issues in the past of a short amount of time for spicy projects. But I also feel like I don't have a complete package to actually make a vote. So we don't have a resolution. I understand the applicant's position. That will be clear with the applicant's position. It'll make staff's focus very clear. They can finish their reports, present a full report to the commission and to the citizens of which I guess the council, if that happens, are we going to? Is it open for public comment again? Because now we have a complete resolution. How, how does the next meeting work for the citizens to come back and comment? Or are we, is this just a whole nother round of, I just want to know so they know?
So if new information is presented at the subsequent meeting, then it's a continued public hearing. So the, at minimum, the public would have the legal right to respond to any new information that's presented at that hearing. And then it's up to the planning commission whether you want to expand that beyond simply what's the new information. You have the discretion to allow people that weren't here previously to comment. That's not a typical response. And most planning commissions, usually planning commissions say, no, let's only talk about the new information. We don't want to recirculate, but that's ultimately your call.
All right, so, so Vice Chair, I guess my gut says, look, I think I'd rather have the full document and allow everybody, if there's new information presented, people can comment on it at that time. We won't make those rules at that place. If there's no new information, well, at least we'll have a resolution. We'll have the staff report. There's still a clock of five. That's not really changing. So there is a defined limit at the end of the day of when this is going to complete. And I know that the applicant's concerned that, you know, this keeps getting stretched out, but we're, we're checking off the boxes along the way here. So I think we're making progress. So while I, deep down inside, want to take the position either way, I don't think I have a complete project to be able to make that decision. So I would vote for the continuance to allow staff to complete the report and we can vote on that report at the next, whenever they decide to come back.
Okay, and is your, would you be supporting a, a continuance to a date uncertain or a date certain?
Date uncertain. I really do think that the staff and the citizens need to be able to review a complete report and not an incomplete report. And so given the, the comments that staff has made tonight, I think that we all deserve as citizens, the ability to read a complete report. That staff can either agree or, I mean, they can make their presentation, but they're at least confident in their results that they're going to make that presentation with. So that's what I say.
Okay, thank you. Does someone want to make a motion?
I will second Commissioner Sheridan's motion.
Do we have that motion from earlier? Or did we have too much conversation in between?
Just to clarify, I, I can't, admittedly, I can't remember the exact motion that was presented, but were you looking for the same motion that was what is within staff's report?
Correct.
It is.
And I can reiterate that.
It is, and I would second that, yes.
Okay. Just to reiterate for the record, it's to continue the project to a date uncertain with direction to the applicant to return for planning commission review with complete right of way improvement plans pursuant to the recommendations of the city engineer and include all applicable studies. The applicant shall also coordinate the public right of way improvements with the city and any applicable agencies, including but not limited to the California Coastal Commission.
Okay, and Susan, is that the motion that you made?
I so moved.
And then Brett, was that the motion you seconded?
Yes.
All right, let's take a vote. Okay, the vote, motion passes 4-0. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Yes, oh yeah, the meeting's adjourned.